Of course, now I can't find. There we go.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the joint meeting of the subcommittees of the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. This is Tuesday, August 11th. It's 5:06 PM. And the subcommittees are dealing with the FY 2021 warrant and budget. And first item on the agenda is just approve the minutes of the previous meetings. Do you want to go ahead and do that?
Dana, before you do that, can I just ask, there's someone on the call that's joined. Their name comes up as Owner. Not really sure who that is. So if they could star six and let us know.
Owner, can you hear us? Oh. Hello?
Star six to unmute, otherwise I can do whatever your name with that one, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Who else are you looking for here?
Well, we don't have Angelo. I don't, he was trying to get on. And we don't have Don Howell.
Well, we won't have Don. Don just got through an operation and had to go back to see the surgeon today, and I think he's pretty much under the weather in a big way.
All right, so the only one we're trying to get on, if he can, is Angelo, but I don't know who Owner is. I think we just proceed and see if we can put together some questions and answers and go down.
That's fine.
Do you want to approve minutes? Can we get a motion for that or?
Sure, I moved that we approved the minutes of the previous meeting. What was the date? I should say the date.
The date is for the July 28th meeting.
I moved that we approved the meetings for the July 28th meeting.
Was there a second? Okay. Yeah, Steve approved, seconded by John. All those on paper, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay. I should do a roll call on these because we're all remote, so.
Yeah, you should.
Yeah, so Steve Ford. Aye, aye. John Troy, aye.
Aye.
All right. So that takes care of the minutes. The next thing I had, I sent out a copy of articles. And it just, I just wanted to have a general discussion on the mechanics of that, and maybe Carol can help us with that. I didn't know if this year was different because of COVID and all the rules that go with that. Do we have to have a town meeting article that approves the return of these articles? Does the money go into the general fund? Does it become available right away? I was just wondering, is this something we can count on in May as some type of reserve or use funds we can use? People returning articles. I know, Joe, at the department head meeting, you had stressed to department heads, I think that they should look at their old articles and stuff like that. Somebody did, I heard, but I guess some people are starting to turn in old articles, and I didn't know what happens with that.
Carol, you can go first.
Okay. On an annual basis, I request department heads to release article balances for work that has been completed, and perhaps there's a small amount of money left, or maybe it's even a larger amount than than what they needed. And that happens on an annual basis, but this year, when Joe and I met, you know, we talked about asking departments to take a second look and to really scrutinize the article balances to and report to us, let us know which articles, in addition to the ones that they already were released or confirmed that they were carrying forward, could be released. And so the departments followed suit, and there were some amounts that were released. Those get released, do they end up falling to free cash? For the town to use in the purposes in which how they would use free cash. So they don't have to go to town meeting to be, to confirm that release. They can just be done through our regular processes, and we're closing the fiscal year.
So those would be, if we close in time, available for September?
As long as free cash is certified before the meeting, yes.
Okay. So another area where some funds are available if they come forward in time, correct?
Correct, and there's been over $300,000 that's been released. A large portion of that was in DPW. They had two items. One of them was sidewalks that they were working with the Department of Transportation with, and they were getting nowhere, and they've gotten nowhere with them. And so the DPW director released those funds. In addition to that, there was another article. It was about $50,000. And the town had been looking for a grant and was denied on a few occasions, and so that money was being released as well. And then there were some other smaller amounts that were released, but, you know, it stems close to, you know, $300,000. Or more.
Questions, John? I know you looked at this list pretty hard.
I didn't hear what you said there.
John, I didn't know if you had some questions or if Steve had some questions. I know, John, you looked at the list.
These were the the four capital items?
No, the returned articles, the article list.
Oh, oh, I, yeah, I had a lot. Oh, I didn't, oh, the returned article list.
The article is outstanding.
Yes. Well, I got a lot of questions. That's a two-hour meeting.
Well, I don't think we have two hours, but if you had some.
Well, the biggest one right off the top of the head is for me is Brook Park lighting, and why that hasn't been done when they're asking for more money for the White House field lights. But again, this is a bigger, much more bigger discussion, so I'll just pass.
So John, Joe, though, there's a quick answer on that one. As everybody knows, there was a change in personnel and a roadblock on procurement. There's been a lot of work done on a lot of those projects. We have the engineering that we need for that project, so there's every expectation that's going to continue on, and more progress will be made the next few months that have made, that has been made in the last few years, so. I would be able to speak to a lot of those if need be.
Yeah. Okay, well, I just, we'll discuss it later, because I don't think there's much progress been made at all, Joe, and.
Let me try to frame the question a different way. You, John, have any questions that you think are policy questions for the Board of Selectmen that they could address?
No, no, it's just, it's just a particular article and how other articles have been handled in the past. Where we ask for one price, and we go back to town meeting and ask for hundreds of thousands of dollars more for other projects. Again, it's more than just some.
It sounds somewhat philosophical, too. So you guys are going to take this offline and discuss it sometime?
Yeah, I've been trying to discuss it for years. Every time we meet with the department heads, I bring it up, and every year meeting, it's, we'll get back to you.
All right. Maybe a one-on-one with Joe, if that's possible at some point, would help screen that out?
Sure, yeah.
All right.
I think the, I think the answer's there, Dana.
Yeah.
You know, there is great focus and scrutiny by both Carol and Joe toward the budget, towards where we can save. Ie, for example, listen to what Carol just said relative to money being returned. I did have a question in that regard. Carol, what was the total from DPW? I did talk to Link, but I couldn't, I'm sorry. For some reason, part of what you said on my phone was blacked out, so I just wanted to see what the end number was from DPW.
So I don't, I don't have that document in front of me. I'm sorry. I can send it to you, but it was over $300,000.
That's great. That's great. Okay.
I'll compile that document with the first round of returns and then the second request, and so you can, you'll have that in one document.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. I also put under there any possible discussions on all of the other things we have going. I think we should try to make some headway on revolving accounts.
Dana, I think I can just, you know, I could just address the stabilization first quickly to get that off the agenda. Relative to the stabilization, we discussed it at the selectmen's meeting. We are all in agreement with you that there should be a placeholder in the warrant for an article relative to the use of stabilization funds. The thing that did come out of it, though, was that they do not want to attach a number to it at this point in time. But, but everyone does feel, as you did, that there should be an article placeholder in the warrant.
Right, and to that end, Steve, the Finance Committee voted to, at least for the print of the warrants, they voted to make no recommendation pending further information. That was our official vote on that one. As you know, that says that we're not going to decide this until after the warrant's printed, after it goes, so we put that one to bed that way, and it will just show up in the warrant as we have nothing until town meeting. At town meeting, we'll have to make a recommendation, and again, my hope is it's to definitely postpone it, but you know, we have it in the toolbox as we've wanted. So the Finance Committee is taking no recommendation.
Right, as, yeah. Also, as relates to the warrant, was discussed again last night, I think. I don't know whether you were on the call last night.
No, I wasn't.
But we are beginning to vote on all the articles in the warrant, starting on Monday, this coming Monday. And we're trying to move quickly to make sure that you guys get our position on all the articles as soon as possible, so hopefully that moves very quickly.
All right, so the Finance Committee voted three more at our last meeting, so we're up to like 32 or 33 or so of the total. So I think you already have our positions on these. There was one article that we had indefinitely postponed, which was one of the CPC articles. We have since voted to reconsider that article and right now have that on hold. We were just, it was hopefully a question with Don, but had to do with the salary portion of that article, but we voted the other CPC articles except for that one in favor of all.
So, yeah, I mean, I think it'll, from everything I could determine from our meeting, it would move along very quickly. I mean, Joe can comment on that, too, but I think that's, you know, we'll turn this around quickly.
Yeah.
The other issue on the capital plan, there was a general consensus that, you know, there, you know, not to go down the road that Dana was talking about, which was the one year and so forth, that, you know, the effort was put into the capital plan and to stick with that.
You mean that Don was talking about?
Don, I'm sorry, my apologies.
Dana was talking about seven years.
I know, it's been a long day, Dana, sorry.
Trust me, it's been a long day. And I don't know if this would work, Joe, if maybe you and I could just run through the capital plan at some time and compare notes as to where we think we are to bring, help bring forward.
That'll work, Carol. Carol's already done an effort, and I'm working off of that.
Okay.
So I can build off of Carol's work, touch base with you, and we can go from there. Before you move on to capital, though, I did have a question for you. I'm gonna show for whoever can see it what I got from you on the FinCom votes from your last meeting, I think.
Right.
I don't know if you can see that, so I had questions for you on the, on the document because let me see, I I noticed something that you had that was free cash that I didn't have as free cash and vice versa. Can I, can I work off of your minutes or something to just confirm that, because I'm writing articles and explanation is as fast as I can?
Yeah, and I can, I can just recheck all of mine and make sure that I have the right thing next to the right vote.
Okay, all right.
And I'll send you that in a bit of email. So on that list that you can see right now, Article 30, we just have on hold. We have taken away the indefinite postponement, the one in. That one now is just a on hold. And then the next three, we voted to accept in the draft, the next three, the lighting and the fencing and the playground. I'll get the exact votes for you. There were people there that night, but some of them were unanimous, so I'll get those votes for you. And you'll be, as to where we are. We have two meetings this week, tomorrow, and Thursday. Hopefully, we can make some more progress. But that, that's kind of where we are, and we'll keep plugging at it, and hopefully we get enough done to be able to go to print. We have two meetings this week, and then we have Friday, the 21st, as our last meeting before we turn it over to your team to print it. Any other questions on the warrant right at the moment?
I will also, I will also tell you, Dana, that the selectmen are in agreement that, you know, if we feel we're getting behind on getting stuff approved and getting in sync with you guys, that we're going to add extra meetings in order to address things.
All right. Yeah, like I said, we had, we put on a, at least before it goes to print, we put on a full court press on our side just to try and get as much information to the voters as possible. And the rest are going to be no recommendation pending further information, so we're trying to get that list as small as possible, so the voters, once they get the warrant in their hands two weeks before town meeting, can see kind of what we're thinking. Which brings me to the other two articles I'd like to at least talk about, are the revolving fund articles. I just don't, I know that from our point of view that the articles, one is Article 46. And that one is Johnny, opening packages again? John?
There we go.
Welcome to Download. We want you to.
John, John, can you? No, are you possible to view? John?
Oh, boy. I didn't mute him.
I don't know. Not good, I guess.
How was that?
Okay, on that article, I, I don't think there's a lot of support from the Finance Committee right at the moment to expand a bunch of departments into more money and more usages, especially for personnel. I think we're, in that case, we're going to have to talk to each group, unless Joe can address it, but I think the Finance Committee needs more information on those before we're going to vote it, but right at the moment, until we get something that changes our mind, I would say that we're not supporting that article at this point, but we haven't taken a vote, so I don't know that for sure, just in the discussion seemed to be going that way.
Dana, I can tell you that, and Joe, please correct me if you think my impression is wrong, but obviously, we haven't voted on anything on this either, but I think the sentiment is very similar in the, in the Select Board.
Okay. And, you know, in that case, maybe that article comes out if we're not ready for it, unless you think someone from the floor is going to do a positive motion, but that's up to you guys. The other article is the money.
Dana, before you go on to the money, can I just ask, and I heard some feedback, I want to make sure it wasn't me. So what you see right there in front of you is just a truncated version of what we had from last year. It does not represent a fully vetted article yet. But when you say that the Finance Committee is not looking to go forward on these, have you thought about the mechanics of that action? In other words, we're in the fiscal year, and if we have funds that have been going into the revolving fund, are you saying that we're removing the authorization of spend, and then the companion action then would be on, as you can see, you know, a draft here and my notes here? Because, you know, I'm trying to use all the resources we have available.
Right.
Have revolving funds that are available that can take pressure off the deficit. I'd hate to give up any financial management tool at this point.
Okay.
So did you, did you talk about the mechanism or the, what the end result might be of those actions?
No, in fact, I thought that I was under the impression, so, so the part that's underlined is the only new part? These are all existing funds? In this article, so it's to add to their abilities?
Hi, it's Carol. Yes, it is to add their, to their abilities, and the first one, the community center, the community center runs like exercise programs and educational programs for an example of Monta Moi students to prepare for SAT exams. And that was coming out of recreation revolving? And they had said to me, well, it's always come out of recreation revolving, and I said, but it's not a recreation program. It's not run by the rec director, it's run by the community center, and it indeed should fall under the community center. So that was the, the first one, that was the change to incorporate the use of the funds for the exercises and educational programs that they run out of the community center. The, the second one was a specific request from the Conservation Commission. I believe their spending limit on conservation is $6,000 a year, and they wanted to be able to to use that fund for restoration projects and management of the conservation. Now, the third one is the one where I think there's a whole bunch of questions around why do we need a part-time, part-time salaries to come out of cemetery revolving? And, and that's a bigger discussion that I think needs to be made, needs to be, you know, occur. So, so, but anyway, it's just the history on the other two were just as I described to you. I don't believe that there's currently any additional funding going into those that that, that we're anticipating the support of the expansion of the use.
All right, so on the community center one, does that's, is that number there now, 75% of their funds from the weight room go into the, the rec program now?
Yes, prior to fiscal year 20, 100% went in, starting in fiscal year 20. This, there was an article that went to town meeting, and it reduced that 100% to 75%, so right now 15% goes into the general fund to support the general fund.
Be 25%.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry.
And that, and that, the weight room brings in some $90,000?
On a typical year, yes.
I mean, when, when, just historically, when that first started, the weight room first started, and we started charging for the very first time, the Finance Committee, back then, I was on the Board of Selectmen at the time, didn't have any budget for money to go back into the weight room to replace weights and all that kind of stuff. And the, the Board of Selectmen asked them to, at least we put in $1,000 just to start something to go towards putting money back into the actual weights and equipment and all that stuff. I'm just wondering if 25% a year of the total addresses something like that? The actual weight room itself being cared for by the, that money instead of it going to pay somebody to hold a class?
So 75% stays in the fund, the revolving fund, which is used to maintain that equipment and replace that equipment, as well as it contains part-time, a part-time person to work in the weight room. I, I think it's a 19-hour-a-week position. So, so 75% of the funds that it raises in membership fees does, is retained in that fund and has been.
Specifically for the weight room, right, Carol?
That's correct, specifically for the weight room.
You know, I, I think, to go back to my comment earlier, the real concern that I heard from a couple of my colleagues on the Select Board was mainly in that third reference you made, Carol, not to the weight room or to the Concom, or not to the community center or the Concom, but to the use of the revolving funds for salary. And I think that's where the real concern was, and, you know, I don't know where the resolution comes out on that one.
So, will this, if we were to move this to community center as a lateral move, does that mean that we'd be reducing the recreation total that they would be spending in and out? I mean, or does this change that?
That's a great question. Last year, I was watching very closely the, the total spending limit of the recreation and and Eric Beebe, the rec director, had to go before the Board of Selectmen and have temporary increases in FY 19 on the maximum spending level. And then at town meeting, of course, the warrant was already drawn up, and he had increased it $25,000. So the, the, these expenses that were generated by the community center that were going through recreation really increased that to like $200,000. So he was going over, he, he was going over without any temporary, I guess, approval by the Board of Selectmen, which is allowed by general law, but it doesn't help to, I don't think that you're going to be able to reduce it. It's at 175,000, and that's typically what the director, director spends on his programs.
And in all these cases, none of the money goes back into the general fund if it goes over?
That's correct. The way that the, these are, the general law in which these are established, I think I sent that information out, if I recall, allows for the, the fund to retain any balances that remain at the end of the fiscal year.
Just to help my understanding of it, Carol, there's a, and sorry, John, I gotta mention pickleball, but there's a, there's a portion of their fee that goes, does that go to the general fund?
A portion of pickleball's fees go to the cultural center when they were playing in the building. The rest of the fees go into recre, it's a recreation program. It goes to recreation revolving.
All right, so I guess my question to the Board of Selectmen would be as a policy, and I don't know if it's going to be done, but I would think that on all revolving accounts, on all fees that we charge, that some type of overhead needs to come back to the general fund. And I don't know if that can be done or structured or how it's done.
What do you mean by overhead?
Well, there's a lot of preparation of fields, there's a lot of preparation of rooms, there's a lot of accounting, there's a lot of treasury.
So are you saying that revenue that is received into the revolving funds that goes beyond, you know, what their annual is, should then be somehow returned to help with the maintenance? Or, as you call it, overhead? Is that what you're saying?
Room prep and all that stuff. I'm thinking that, that somehow each fee, like when, when the Board of Selectmen propose and, and put together a fee, if the entire thing goes into the general fund, it goes into the general fund.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying, Dana, all I'm, all I'm trying, Dana, all I'm trying to do is get the question so I can pose it to the Select.
My question would be, can we structure fees that are in revolving funds, those fee structures? Can they be structured, like if they're paying $55 to play a season of pickleball or whatever, can can 10% of that go into the general fund somehow? Can their fee be structured that way?
I will obviously, you know, got to, Carol, if you, if you want to chime in as to whether you think that's doable, I can certainly ask the Selectmen that question too.
Well, I mean, I, I think we'd have to separate it, this out and, and maybe you have to be fair right along all the revolving funds. But I know, or I believe that the Recreation Department sets the fees based on the costs that they incur in the revolving fund. And so I think you'd be looking at increased fees, which is fine. It's just, you know, just so that you knew that as, for that purpose there. And then I don't know how you would structure that for like the cultural center where you're renting out those rooms and those are all going into a revolving fund. And if you were looking for overhead, right now, the board, or FY20 and prior, the board had set a five-year goal that they would subsidize that cultural center on an annual basis. Now, we may have some changes moving forward because they've amassed quite a balance in their revolving fund. So we may, we may be proposing to the Board of Selectmen some changes. But I just wonder how we would structure those fees and whether they have to be fair across the board. I, I'm not sure. And I guess I'd have to look at the general law to see what that would allow for.
Okay. Well, it's certainly a question, you know, it's certainly a question Dana that I can pose to the, to the Select Board. So, you know, we'll, we'll see what kind of reaction we get. I know there's some pretty strong feelings about, you know, revolving funds generally speaking. So we'll come back to you on that question.
All right, I just think in the general discussion on revolving funds, we got to have to talk about whether or not to, and I, and it certainly can't be done in time for this meeting, I don't think. Whether or not we should be working towards putting some of the annual stuff into the budget, the, the cost and the fees. And make sure that the fees are appropriate for not only covering the program itself, but for covering, you know, what, what, I mean, buildings have to be operated and.
No, I, I, I got, I got where you're coming from.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
This is John again. I'm trying to work this button here. Just a quick question on that. When you said overhead, do you mean like, this is just an example, I just want to understand it. If, if, if DPW mows the ball field, do they want to get paid for that Dana? Is that what you mean?
I, I'm thinking that, that all of the activities that prepare rooms inside or out, all the, the heat and, and electricity and all those things across the town in general. I can't discuss any specific department, but there's accounting on, there's, there's treasury stuff that goes on. There's a lot of town effort, just like from the water department, which is an enterprise on a whole different bargain. But we do get a portion of it back to the town to cover some of that part of the operation. There's a million dollars worth of, of activity going on out there and the town gets zero out of it as far as these facilities that the activities are going in, in, as near as I can see. So I just think it's.
Yeah, yeah. I, I understand what you're saying on overhead, but the town does, the town does get value here. So let's, let's not, you know, I mean, the people of the town enjoy the programs that are created as a result of this. So, you know, I, I understand completely what you're trying to do, which is focusing on, on what the actual cost is of providing these services.
Taking pressure out of the budget again. I mean, there, there's got to be ways we can take pressure out of the budget. And, and in the process of this subcommittee, I think we're open to looking at, at everything. I was thinking on the, the water and sewer budget, the water, we get a, a portion back. What about sewer? Are we going to get a portion back from that? It's a different kind of fund, but should they be building into whatever they're doing? The same as water, some portion of that fund? I think we're looking at everything kind of a new right now.
So Dana, can I speak to that for a second? Yes, all, all of that is actually in place. All of those discussions are things that Carol and I have talked about. And as we progress through this process, we'll have more, I'll have more updates. But a lot of what you've talked about are pending me having conversations with the department heads. Because I think it's appropriate for me to speak to them first about all the different financial management tools that we may be using. And everything you just mentioned is on the table. But I didn't want you or any of your, anyone of your committee or the Selectmen to think that, that we're not reviewing that. We are and everything's in play. We, I think, when I say we, I think all of us on this call understand where we're at financially and what we need to get through on September 26th. So I just don't want you all to leave this meeting thinking that it hasn't been considered. It's not. Some of the things that you're talking about may already be in play. I just need to go through a process. So I have, I have a department head meeting every week now. This week it's going to be on Thursday and I've got a few calls already set up to further those conversations.
So in that light, it is beneficial that we keep talking about things because it.
Right, exactly. Yep, absolutely.
All right, Carol?
Could I mention something, please? I just want to be, just going back to the revolving funds and the discussion about salaries, part-time salaries. So right now you have part-time salaries coming out of Council on Aging Revolving Fund, the Cultural Center, the Community Center, the Golf Pro Shop and Recreation. Just, just so that you know, you do already have quite a number of departments that have part-time salaries coming from those funds.
Yeah, and I, I think I understand that. And I think it's one of those things that probably snuck up on me and, and wasn't fully aware of that. But I also think that we should between now and May look sincerely at putting those in budgets and having part of the fees cover that instead of doing it through a revolving fund. I think that, as Dawn has said even, and one of the few areas we agree on, having the people managed by unpaid volunteers in some cases just kind of gets to a spot that maybe we shouldn't be in as a town. Just as a thought. But it's a good discussion and I hope we, I know a couple of board members, maybe you included Steve, have talked about really wanting to get into it. And I think that that's, that's a worthy discussion, that, that we break it down and we figure these things out.
Dana, can I ask, can I ask a procedural question of everybody? Recognizing that this is not my first annual town meeting, but my first annual town meeting in Harwich, I want to make sure I'm capturing everything correctly. So in that particular instance, there was a reference to the part-time position in that department and using revolving funds. Is that considered a new position? And what is required through the town's processes of adding new positions? Is, you know, does that have to go before town meeting? Does it have, is it something that I would do through administration? What's the expectation if that article were to go forward in that manner? How would we actually acquire or have that position to then advertise?
I think historically, all, it was actually in the charter. There's been several changes to the charter over the years. I don't remember specifically if that is still in there or it's gone. But it is in the charter that all positions will be brought to town meeting. Now, it used to be they were brought in a separate article and approved separately from the budget. And that money would be raised and appropriated and, and put into the budget that way. Since then, over the last couple of administrations, they've been, it's been coming in as, while they're in the budget, they're new and we just talk about it at town meeting rather than a separate article for them. I think transparency-wise, my position would be that's mine. That we all want to know about. Is that John again? John, making all the noise. I just think. To make all of the new position-wise known to people. And if these people are being positioned without benefits and all that stuff, that should be known as well. I mean, I just think it's, it's a transparency thing.
I totally appreciate the response regarding transparency. You know, my question is just because my reading of the charter and I'm, got it right here. It says under administrative reorganization that any new full-time compensated position that the board approves has to be funded by a vote of town meeting. So this is a part-time position. There's a funding mechanism so-called. But I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing any other procedural requirements to put that whole discussion in jeopardy.
I do not know the answer to that.
I, I would actually think that, that that's worth running by legal, but I, I personally don't know if that's in any violation or not. I think it's, it's important that we talk about them as we go through each town meeting. But they, they, you know, they, they were, like I said, it snuck up on me. They're, they're very obscure in that's one sentence as to what the uses can be. And all of a sudden, we don't know if it's five people, if it's 10 people, if it's 50% of the revolving fund is going towards people and the rest of the program money has been squeezed. I, I have no idea what the mix is. So I think that part of it is correct no matter what. I think town meeting deserves transparency on it no matter what.
Well, I will convey your thoughts.
Like I said, it's worthy discussions, but probably the, the, whatever numbers get written in. I know, Joe, you're still putting the, the articles themselves together, but probably nothing can really, really change for this town meeting on the second article, the Article 37, as we have it with the, the actual limits. Because we don't, I think, have time to change budgets and fix that and do all those things. But I, so I see that one going forward as is. But I'm not sure how the rest of the committee feels.
I think you're probably correct, but.
So Dana, when you say as is, level fund from last year's article, 65?
Well, unless the, the board, I think it's certainly a policy issue that the Board of Selectmen would say, well, no, this year we're going to cut them by a third. I, I, I don't know what is, if COVID is affecting some of the programs and they're not going on to the same level they were. If you're thinking that maybe in May we'll make some changes to reduce some of these and put some in the budget, maybe some levels will stay the same, but we'll start working on that. Or maybe they come down. I don't know. I really don't know.
Well, I think for discussion purposes, I'll populate it based on last year. So at least there's not a blank table. Of course, that's absent of the last one that related to that property on Queen Anne that didn't make it.
Understood.
That's all I'm going to say about that.
That was direction from town media.
Correct. Thank you.
So I think we made some progress today. I think it's, we have a lot of trouble trying to get meeting space in between stuff. But I think after the next two meetings that the Finance Committee has and then after the next Monday night meeting that the Board of Selectmen has where some votes have taken place and so forth, we should probably meet next week if we can remotely like this so we don't bother anybody with moves and stuff. But if that's possible.
No, I'm, I'm available. Just let me know.
All right.
So Dana, the effort is going to be to try and be remote because it's not just this group. It's the impact upon that room. If we all show up, we're a group that's greater than the capacity in the Griffin Room, so on and so forth.
Right.
But I, as the organizer, I can ensure that we always have a dedicated meeting so we don't have to disconnect like we did at our last meeting.
Right, that's great. That, that would be fine.
Sounds good.
And I would say we're meeting Friday night, the Selectmen are meeting Monday night. Any of those other nights, if 5 o'clock doesn't work, I'm out of work by 4:30. I could be anywhere from 5 on, can be earlier.
Yeah, I mean, if we're, if we're going to do it by phone, that's not even an issue. So that's, you know, as long as it's after when people are available, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anything else for us for tonight? I appreciate everything that everybody did to get to this meeting. I know I had to do a lot to get to this meeting and I thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So second, thank you very much. We can stop recording.